Very well, very well, and thank you. Thank you all for coming for tonight's meeting for the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals. And it is 6:30 PM, and we're at room 320 at the multi-server center. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. My far left, our regular member, Mr. Richard Sample. Next to him, Mr. Jake Morrison. My far right, associate member, Mr. Troy Larson. Regular member, Mrs. Veronica DeBeneese. And our clerk, Mr. Jim Akabachi, and myself, the chair, Nazir Alkhlaasie. We're gonna do like the minutes quick for 11:30, 22.
I did read those minutes. There was one little minor error that Veronica has corrected. Therefore, unless anybody sees anything wrong, that I didn't see that's wrong with them, I make a motion that we approve as presented.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Aye, second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, abstain, it carries.
And for the record, I didn't fix anything, Jim. It was probably Sonya.
Yeah, I did. I've always called.
You said Veronica.
Sorry. Sorry, Sonya.
Okay, we're gonna move forward to continue public hearing. Clear channels there? She's not here.
I think we have a clear channel over here.
Clear channel is the first one. What are you asking about?
Where is she?
She's on Zoom, letting her in now.
She's what?
He's letting her in the Zoom.
Oh, she's doing the Zoom thing.
Okay, she just asked to unmute.
It's, it's.
Attorney, move on. Hello?
Julian, you got your mute button on?
Hello?
Oh, ta-da. We thought you were coming in.
No, she doesn't have her mute button on.
We thought you were on Zoom. You were on Zoom, and you were zooming up. Take your time.
Yeah, we'll go to, we'll move to 40-22. Koshal Bot on 47 Sandwich Road. Okay, name an address for the second, for the record, for the second.
Yep, Koshal Bot, 891 Main Street, Route 28, South Yarmouth, Massachusetts, 02664.
Okay, sir. You gonna be speaking, sir?
Yes, Jim Cowitt, 17 Atkins Road, East Sandwich, Mass.
Okay, very well. And last time, now remember, you have four members only. Mr. Morrison wasn't here. So you get four. One, two, three. Who else wasn't here last time?
They opened it, and it was only four of us here, and they opened it anyway, if I remember. Or did you continue?
Richard, Jake, Nazir, Jim, Veronica.
We did open, but then continued.
Troy wasn't here. You went here.
I wasn't here until the 30th.
Right, you went here until.
We didn't, we didn't hear any testimony, so they could have five.
No.
That was Jim's.
That was the clear challenge. She didn't testify. We did testify, and we remember, we said we're gonna drive by and go by and look at it.
Yep, yep, okay.
All right, so you have Ms. DeBeneese, Mr. Akabachi, myself, and Mr. Sample. So what, you wanna say anything before we ask the board member? How was that trip?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I wanted to present was, I did review. I went back and watched the meeting video once it was uploaded to YouTube, and I just wanted to address the three concerns that were presented last time. I don't know if you want me to do that now.
Yeah, sure, definitely.
Yeah, so the three concerns raised, the first one was density, the lot size. And I just wanted to point out that the uniqueness of the lot as it currently sits, the proposed use is reducing the traffic flow and density. So right now, with the three medical professionals that were working out of it, they were seeing upwards of 50 vehicles per day between patients, staff, lab runners. And so we're, even, I know density would be a concern, but under its current use, it's significantly higher than what we're proposing, which would be four to five tenants, you know, cars total. So it is a reduction of density from its current use. And then additionally, just the butter comment for the headlights. That's an issue that exists today, but we were willing to put up a fence on the rear property line to mitigate some of that. I did take a picture of the map view for the current property that we're working with and the butter that had come in, just to show the placement in case anybody wanted to see that. And then I think that's everything for now.
Okay, I do understand the traffic would definitely be less. But what would it be the hardship to break the law almost four places? To give you, first, to give you setback relief and to give you three units where you only be allowed? Right now, it's a grandfather for a commercial, so you actually need also a used variance. So what's the?
Yeah, so we made an offer on this property in August, and we've done a lot of review from then till now, and we've looked at two three-bedroom units, three two-bedroom units, four one-bedroom units. And the reason we landed on a one, two, and a three is because the building structure itself, it's a concrete slab, so a lot of utilities are run through this slab, mainly drainage. And so we're trying to work within a certain cost range where breaking up the foundation to remove some of the utilities around would become much more cumbersome, and we'd have to compromise the structural integrity of the building, as well as blow out walls to be able to then report the foundation once we relocate utilities. So we're trying to work within the confines of the existing division of utilities and the current commercial spaces, the zones that are allocated. We're working within that space the best we can.
Excuse me, if I may. So right now, there's three water bills and three sewer bills for that building?
So the water and sewer bill is one, but there's three gas meters, three electric meters, three front egresses, three rear egresses, so that's.
So the gas and electric company treat it as three units, but the town treats it as one?
Is that?
One water bill, one sewer bill.
That's, that's normal, sir. We, I own a lot of properties. That's normal, we get one.
And let me explain something, because that's what I do. Regarding electric, water, sewer, all these things, except sewer, it's irrelevant. You could have the same meter. The sewer will be one connection, but you'll be charged for three units, or two units, or one, or how many units you have. It would be one pipe. The water, if you have, say, 16 apartments, you could have one meter because per EDU, or per, I mean, cubic feet, or whatever it is. So, like, so these things don't usually, like, what I'm trying to say, these things don't have impact on zoning, the water, sewer, electric, heat, or even tax bills. For some reason, sometimes the town missed taxing it as a buildable law. It's still irrelevant, and sometimes they tax buildable, unbuildable lots. So these things should not be affecting a zoning, a zoning board decision. But I understand what you said with the meters, electric, egress, all that. But what would, why, why would the board? What is the hardship to give three units where you only really, if that lot was empty, you'd be allowed one? And as it is, you're not even allowed one.
Yeah, so.
You know, it's commercial now. You needed to change the use.
Yeah, so it's in an MR30 zone, which is multi-residential MR30. And I understand that the dimensions of the lot don't meet the current zoning measures for three units, but the real hardship is the concrete slab foundation and relocating utilities from where they currently stand. Big thing being drainage is in the foundation. So if we wanna move that, the water where some of that stuff runs, if we wanted to adjust the size of any of the units and shift them around, we would have to jackhammer the foundation and then report, and afterwards, making those changes, which makes financially not feasible of a project to do.
To do what? To do one unit?
Well, if we wanted to make it, you know, two units, or, you know, one would be a very different. We haven't really reviewed one unit, because at that point, financially, it just doesn't work, the numbers on the property.
Okay, let me.
Naz, can I, can I mention? The town has been looking for more and more affordable housing. And it's been your board, and I know other boards, that they don't want large commercial construction to be done, right? Because you're building an area that is not in keeping with the rest of the town. And people will circumvent the town's boards by doing 40B. Here's an opportunity to turn a derelict property into a property that is beneficial to people, beneficial to, to the town. And I don't see what the hurt is gonna be. You're asking for what is the hardship, but what is the benefit to the town that outweighs any of that? We don't want, I personally don't want, you know, a 300-unit building in my backyard. Here's one that will be appealing, nice. It's not gonna be something that just looks like a medical building and stays a medical. This is gonna turn into someone's home. And if we have to do one or two units, it doesn't become financially feasible. So it is what it is. It is in an MR30 zone. It would have been allowed. It is kinda spot-zoned, right? Because it's surrounded by other residentials. So we're hoping that instead of the, what's the hardship? What is the benefit to the town?
I totally understand, and probably some of us don't like the C300 unit building or C300. But this is completely irrelevant to this case. And each parcel and permit application has its merits. For instance, if somebody's doing 300 units somewhere in Wareham, I would assume it's doing 40B. That's mandated by the state. You have to follow the rules. And I have nothing against it. However, what do I tell the person across the street? Or for instance, if you remember the lady that came for the dock canal, and we said, no, she has a building pretty much a little bit bigger than that, actually, like 15,000 square. What happened if she comes back? She says, you know what? Why don't you give me three units? We need, we would like to keep or follow the bylaw as close as possible. We are a lenient board. Everybody knows we're pretty much a yes board, but in certain things. I understand that the whole state needs housing. The town needs, everybody needs housing, but does not mean, does not, does not mean that we can break every bylaw, because that's pretty much what a zoning board does, break every bylaw to grant three units. I mean, if it was a setback, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Everybody knows. So is the rest of the board. Some, a lot of times, we set back reliefs, we give height reliefs, we give, we give front relief, front setback relief. But to come out and give three units where you're not, which you actually allowed one with a used variance, it's, I totally understand. It looks good there. It's blended there. It's a good location, everything. But then again, we, how are we gonna be fair to everyone else? We just denied one last week. They wanted to add one unit. That's, and it's an existing, and it has a bathroom and everything. But that's my opinion anyway. I'll start with Troy. Troy, what do you think? Are you, you're not voting, but you could comment.
I really don't have any questions right now.
I, the fact that the building is set up the way that it is, I mean, what they're proposing to do just makes sense. This, I guess the question would be, if we were to deny this, would we prefer to have three commercial units there? I mean, that's what it is existing. Does that fit there? Do we want that traffic if this building were to be sold to somebody who was going to use it commercially? Because, I mean, we want the building to be fixed up. We also want housing. It's set up perfectly for that. What do we want? So I think we have to think about the building.
That's why we're here, and that's why we discuss, and we absolutely, it's our discretion. If we feel it's fit, we have all the right to grant it. I mean, that's, that's why I'm gonna pass it by everyone.
But could, could I get a little feedback on that, though, from the board? What does the other board members feel about it remaining commercial and being three units with a lot of in and out? Is it a better fit? Or is turning it residential a better fit? Because the building, if it's empty and it's gonna fall into disrepair, it's better for us to make a choice, I think, for use.
Good comment. Jimmy?
Well, you mentioned earlier about the number of variances needed. You need a used variance. You need three setback variances. Rear, front, side, and rear. That's three. You need a frontage variance, that's four. So we got five variances, not counting lot area. But the used variance, the neighborhood merits granting a used variance over to residential, in my opinion. Okay? The front, side, and rear setbacks, well, I think those merit the variance because the building is existing.
Right.
You know, we're not, the clothesline is loose. We're not gonna move the building. We're gonna shorten the clothesline.
Right. That's absolutely.
So those three variances, the use and the three setbacks, I don't have, and you know what? I don't even have a problem with the frontage variance in this instance, because again.
The building is there.
Yeah, it's there. He can't.
Those, I totally agree, which is what needs.
You know, it's like trying to stretch a board after you cut it too short. You can't. So the only thing that, therefore, the only thing that's left to consider is lot area. And it's a small lot for three units. And I looked at the plans. I haven't relooked at them. I don't believe you've changed them. Frankly, I think that it might be a compromise. Instead of going with a one, or two, and a three, go with two threes. Take the one and the two, put them together. You got a dandy, two-bath, three-bedroom unit. And the income is gonna be similar, but not as good. I get it. You'll get more money out of a one, or two, and a three. But I would like to think it's financially feasible if you had two threes there as well. And that might be more, I know it's more, my only concern with making two threes is that means you've got two families and no yard, no place for the kids to play. But you get that old age home out back, and they can go drive those old people crazy, and that might be good for them. My mom and dad retired to an over 55 community, and I think it was the worst thing that anybody should do is go lock themselves in behind a fence and not see kids. Kids are wonderful. So I know Richard asked me to talk as long as I could, because he noticed that we have a short meeting tonight. He doesn't like going home too early. But those are my thoughts. So as far as, oh, everything they're asking me for, yeah, they're asking, I shouldn't say me, us, one, three, four, five, six of these, six of these requests are almost, okay, shrug your shoulders, what else can you do with it? Whether it's, whether it's commercial or residential, and frankly, I think the neighbors would prefer to see residential there. It's more business for the dentist right there, right next door. All those kids will need their teeth fixed. And we're left again with the lot area, and again, we can't change that. So, yeah, I'm kind of, I'm kind of falling in line with Veronica, and let's just, you know, what, I guess I'd just like to go on record in saying that we make our decisions on a, on an application-by-application basis. And this isn't setting a precedent.
No.
For people to come roaring in and saying, I want three units on a 7,000-square-foot lot. How big is the lot?
Uh, 9,300 square feet.
9,300 square feet? That's, you know, this is in no way telegraphing to the town that 9,300 is a fine lot size for two or three units. I personally would, would, I don't care. I can see there's a need for ones, there's a need for twos, there's a need for threes. No matter what you put there, you're gonna fill it. The day you put up a for-rent sign, you're gonna have more applications than you want. Can only say yes to two or three applicants. But I think that maybe two threes might be a better approach to soften it to the, you know, to the town.
Sir, would you prefer three two-bedrooms? Or would you prefer the two?
No, I'd prefer two three.
Two threes.
Two threes, rather than, because it's two units opposed to three units. What would I prefer? I'd prefer it to have, you know, be five stories high and have 15 one-bedroom units. But the rest of the town would, you know, they've got the tower already on the kettle.
Yeah, they are, yeah, yeah.
The feathers, the pillows have been all opened, and looking, we'll get, we see the hand in the back. We'll, we'll open it to the public. Go ahead.
Richard?
So I'm just looking at the future plans that you got here. So it's an ideal spot for people who have handicaps and ADA. And I'm just wondering, I'm looking at these bathrooms. These bathrooms don't seem to be ADA-compatible to get a wheelchair in, turn around. I'm a little concerned, because I think it would invite people that want to, and it doesn't look like it's set up for it. Secondly, I used to go to that office to see Dr. Brown, and it's one of the most ridiculous parking lots to try and get in and out of. And then ever since the dentist's office opened up, they took a bunch of their parking out, so it's even tighter. So my concern would be like, okay, you got commercial, people come and go all day long, but at night, there's not a lot of traffic. When you put that many people that you're asking for in there, how many people are coming to visit? How many cars are gonna sit there overnight or for whenever they're ready to use it? It kind of, to me, doesn't seem like it's gonna work, being what you're, to give you an okay what you're asking for, but I kind of would lean towards the two units. I just, it's putting an awful, I understand the building's there, and I understand about the housing and everything that we're talking about. I'm just got some concerns. Those are my ones that I'm really concerned about. Other than that, I'm all done talking.
Sir, may I readdress?
Your, Richard, one second, please. Jake?
Do you guys have anyone in particular that you guys will be wanting to rent there? Like, any certain age, age groups or anything? Or just anybody? Would this be low income, or?
Yeah, the plan for, I actually had some intentional living in potentially one of the units for a period of time. That was something that I've, kind of, was part of the plan initially. In terms of renting, I was just going to have a real estate company do, handle the whole, putting the apartments up, procuring tenants, contract, the background check, all that.
Market rents.
Okay. Not market, it would be FMR. It would be based upon housing. It would probably be either Kingston Housing Authority, or it'd be one of those two. But it would be based on FMR.
What's FMR stand for?
Go ahead, Jim.
Jim, my turn. Yeah, I mean, I would be okay if it was like a 55-plus thing. I'm very familiar with the community behind there. And if I, if I was someone that lived right there, and all of a sudden, they put in low income, it's something that I wouldn't want behind me. I grew up in a house, and then all of a sudden, low income came in and kind of ruined our neighborhood. So I wouldn't like if it was low income, or I'd be more towards 55-plus community in there.
Well, I, I don't think we're gonna, or a good idea to restrict to low income or anything for, for two units, if we agree on two or three. There's a lot of paperwork and a lot of monitoring, and it's not really feasible to do two units. It would be marketplace, market price, and it won't be like, I mean, if they choose to rent to a low income themselves, that's fine. But to do a deed rider and check it out and follow up with it every year, and then have a CPA look at the income every year, it's very complicated for two units. It's not feasible at all. And that's what you're supposed to do when you do low-income housing. And same with 55. I mean, they will have to have a deed restriction and stuff. But if you do 55 and older, and if you guys are willing to grant them, I don't think it's fair to say two units, because 55 don't have kids.
I would be okay with more units if it was 55 and plus, 55 plus.
Right. But then again, we have to go back and redo a deed rider and all this. But I'm more lenient, like Veronica said, than Rich, the two units versus the three for right now. I wanna go to the public, sir. Wanna come forward, state your name, grab any mic you want.
Yes, Markham Scott, Indian Neck Road, right behind there. I'm concerned about, like what Jacob said, the value of my house is gonna go down. And it's not really a good place for kids. There's a lot of traffic on that road already, and there's no yard. They'll be kicking the ball out there. Somebody's gonna get hurt. It's really not a good place.
I, I do agree, that's not a good spot for kids. I, I was gonna suggest go three one-bedroom.
That's what I was thinking, too. And the other thought, Rick had a really good point about handicap accessible because of the way that that is very low to the ground. It's all tarred.
You might be getting a lot of handicap.
And two of the bathrooms are already ADA. One of them's not, to answer your question. There's two that are in there that are already wide. So we'd have to take a wall down and enlarge another. But there, with the doctor's office, when you first walk in the main door, which was Dr. Brown's office, there's one, they're back-to-back. One faces one direction, one faces the other. We were gonna reconfigure that just because it would face into a bedroom, opposed to otherwise. But if that's a concern, and you want us to make ADA bathrooms, I don't think that that's unreasonable at all.
What do you think, sir?
I'm against it. I think my property value's gonna go down, and, you know, I go to work every day. I don't know what's gonna happen while I'm gone. You know what I mean? I mean, how would you, would you, would you guys want that in your backyard? I'll just leave it at that.
I mean, I see his point, because it was a doctor's office. It was only busy during the day. And then now, it's gonna have people living there 24 hours a day. Again, you can't have the kids go play in the grass out back. That's not their property. The kids get hurt on it. It's gonna be issues. I don't wanna create something that's just gonna cause havoc for the duration of, as long as it's, you know, have for.
Especially with, especially with creating a variance for it. I mean, if it was a special permit, I totally understand.
Somebody's, something happens to somebody, and they follow back on us that we approved it? I mean, is that gonna happen?
I mean, accidents could happen anywhere, but it won't come back to us, but we wouldn't feel good. I guarantee you, we would not be feeling good. But.
So does it sound like we're more pushing towards being single units in 55 or older, ADA?
And it has to be deed restricted then.
And we can't do that, because the loan that we're taking won't allow deed restrictions. We already checked into that to see if we could do it through a LIP, and they won't allow it. And one-bedroom units won't have children. So if you're concerned with children, if we do three one-bedrooms, as, as the board is suggesting, that eliminates the children.
I think that was the board's thought, because of location, that it's not good for children. But elderly, it would certainly open the door for them.
Yes, yeah. I mean, three one-bedroom units, I'm speaking for myself, but, yeah, I'm not opposed to it. You opposed to it?
No. One, the far right, you know, would be significantly large compared to the other, just the nature of the existing layout, but we can make that work.
Now, I want, remind the board, as practice, when it's a special permit, while the neighbors stand up, say, I don't like so many units and stuff. But special permit, it is what it is. The bylaw allows it. But remember, we have a neighbor against it, and it's a variance. I'm not against it, but we do, and I'm sure the nice gentleman in the back, if it was, we're giving a variance for a setback or something like this, he wouldn't care. And he does have a case. I don't know. We, I guess we have to rethink about it. The only way is probably 55 and older, or, unfortunately, we cannot restrict it, no kids. It's kind of legal.
Yeah, it's fair housing.
Right, you can't say, oh, you can't rent with kids. Can't do that.
Sir, can, can I just point out? I mean, we're not taking anything away from him, because I have neighbors, too, but he's a distance from this.
Doesn't matter, still, he's your neighbor.
He is, he is a neighbor, but not adjacent neighbor.
In my personal experience in Wareham, I had housing built across from me. After it was built, we were robbed. Before, there was woods. After that, there was, there was low income in many houses. I'm just, I'm just saying, and be, to be, if I was living in, if my grandmother was living in the 55 housing behind there, I wouldn't feel safe, even if it's three houses, because that's just my opinion.
So back to square one. Troy, help out. I know you're not voting.
I know. It's, it's a tough situation.
I mean, I guess.
I mean, we don't have to decide tonight. We could push it. But remember, next to 28, we have a huge.
And I think they're trying to get an answer.
And the 28, we have to come, if we bring it to the 28, we just come in here, say yes or no. One minute, that's it, because we have.
Yeah, and there's no reason to delay it. It's not like something's gonna change between now and then.
But we have to direct them properly. I mean, what do you, what do you guys want? What do we want from them? Are we saying no? Are we want three, two? What do you want? Just say your opinion, and each one will give their opinion.
I feel like three singles would be fine to me, and I'd like to see them handicap accessible or the bathrooms. There were two bathrooms that would be larger, so.
Three one-bedrooms.
Three one-bedroom.
I'd like to, I'm, I'm in favor of reducing the number of bedrooms. I'm also looking at the plan more closely now, instead of using my memory. How many square feet per unit?
So, it's the first unit currently, it's rough just shy of 600. The middle one is a little over 600 and the last one's about 800.
Okay, so Wareham, I think, requires 650 square feet. Not counting closets and not counting bathrooms?
A five or plus unit.
On five or plus, yeah.
Has to be five units or plus.
Okay.
That's what the building commissioner told us as well.
This, when you have five and under, you can do six.
So then the other thing I'm looking at here is in unit three, you've got an area, a small bathroom, okay. You've got a kitchen, you've got a room that I assume is going to be the living room, says unit three in there, and then there's three rooms marked bed and then there's another room with no marking on it.
That was planned to be like.
No closets in any of the bedrooms. Are these existing walls, are they like exam rooms that you're just calling them?
So, we're working with the current structure of the building. That extra room was supposed to be like a home office slash laundry room hookup, so that's what we're using that room for. A lot of these, because their observation rooms have plumbing running through the walls.
I'll stop asking, the question that was asked of me, what would I like to see? I think I'm going in the direction of three ones.
Richard?
Three ones is my vote.
Three ones?
If that's, yeah.
What do you think, sir?
I think it's better than three or two and one, but I just feel my property value is going to drop.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about the value dropping.
I know people who come to my asking and stuff, well, you know. I know people who started to live.
Yeah, if you want to, just come back to the mic, it has to be on public. Public.
You know, I know people need a place to live and, you know, people going through hard times and stuff. I just, a lot of times, those kind of people are kind of desperate and they do things they shouldn't be doing, you know what I'm saying? I don't want to be a victim.
All right. Is one-bedroom apartment, now Wareham, we have our own inspection yearly. So we, it will be, it's very, they're very strict, so they, the border house does their own inspection every year and it will be conditioned. We cannot condition no kids, but it would be conditioned one-bedroom. But there's laws, legally, you can't live one, two, I mean, husband or wife or boyfriend or girlfriend or whatever with two kids in one bedroom legally. So they follow the rules, so if they see this happening in this house or any neighbors complain, they can shut you down, the border house, immediately. They have the authority to shut you down. So, because you're not supposed to put two kids and the parents in one room. There's a state guideline for that.
Correct, of course.
And usually, one-bedroom will attract a couple or a single person. In this matter, I would really like it to attract an elderly person, like Richard said, that'd be great. Handicap person, that'd be perfect, win-win for everybody. And it might a lot because it's one floor, because we ain't much around those, because the bylaw does not mandate 25 units and over to have a handicap unit. You have to have 25 units and over to make it one, so in this case, those three could all qualify. What do you think, Rich? You good?
I'm good.
Jake?
These bathrooms look wicked small. Good Lord.
There's not even a shower drawn in there yet.
Right, well, what we gotta do, I mean, we're going to give them thumbs up and you gotta come back with plan next hearing. We just give you one minute, we close the public hearing and show us a plan and date it, show on the one-bedroom each, no dens or library or reading room, one bedroom with big living room and show ADA bathroom. These bathrooms are not ADA. These bathrooms are ADA for a toilet and a sink, not for a shower.
No, there's no showers.
Right, because there's no shower, so they are ADA, they only need eight by seven to be ADA. That's not four by six. They're not even ADA's the way they are.
That's the future plan. The current plan is the next page over in the packet provided.
It says future plans.
Yeah, so the current plan is the current states, where the currently, one of them was ADA compliant, the larger one in the front. But the future plan, we were making adjustments to where the unit lines were drawn.
And the other has a shower in it currently that we were going to move into the hall closet that is, it was ADA and that at some point, somebody put a stand-up.
Yeah, but a five, five foot, seven-wide bathroom, that's not ADA. You don't have five-feet radius in front of toilet seat or a sink, so it's got to be minimum eight.
It's 10 by 5'7".
Right, the 5'7", the width, you need minimum eight. You need minimum eight by eight to be ADA and that's without shower. Keep in mind, that's a toilet and sink, because you need that five-foot circle with the door closing, the toilet, without touching the toilet and without touching the sink or a shower and the door circled. So you gotta go back, draw these three one-bedroom, but we all give our word, we're okay with one-bedroom, right? So they don't go for nothing. Rich, he's okay? Jim? Troy, I know you can't vote, but you okay with it? Veronica, you okay?
Yes.
You guys want to vote?
No, I mean, we want, try to make everybody happy so it doesn't end up in court.
I understand what they're doing and I feel bad even being up here, but I just.
So, and I guess if my member's going to go for it, I'm going to go for it, because if I say no, it's dead. But I'm not going to go against my board member if they're willing to do this. But come back with three, show the bathrooms, the showers, we need them dated because that's what we're going to go by.
A real plan.
A real plan, okay? All right, that being said, let's continue.
Make a motion to continue. Are we going to keep the public portion of this hearing open?
Yes.
Make a motion to continue.
Until the 28th and you'll be here for one minute because we're very busy.
I'll second.
Sir, if you want to come back, you won't be getting a notice if you are going to come back on the 28th, so you have to come back on your own. You won't be getting any green cards or nothing to sign. Thank you, thanks for coming. 6:30, yes. Okay, motion to continue, which one is this? Forty dash 22 till the 28th. By Jim, do I have a second? Second to continue?
I already seconded.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, abstained, so 4-0-0, we see you on 28th.
Karsho will be out of the, out of the country, but I will be here.
Yeah, that's fine.
So as long as you're okay with me being here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
As long as you bring the plan.
I will, I promise I'll bring the plan.
Plans as we discussed with, because we're only giving you a minute.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll go, we'll move forward to 39 dash 22, clear channel. All right, outside, guys, you gotta take it outside. Thank you.
Has this even been read in or?
Yeah, public hearings open, name an address and fill us in and you have five board members.
We're waiting for Jim to read it in.
No, it's already read. We opened and continued.
Okay.
Didn't we?
I honestly, I don't recall.
No, no, we had.
It was opened, yeah.
There's no way.
Okay.
There's no way we'd just let you go without open and continue. It's open and continue, was never discussed and now Jake, I guess he can come in.
Okay.
So you got five members.
Attorney Julian Morton, 184 Main Street, Wareham. I represent Clear Channel and we have the principal here as well, he's on Zoom, so Michael is here. And what you have in front of you today is a request for a sign variance for the billboard that's located 3077 Cranberry Highway. This is right near Sullivan Tire, the car wash currently there. And in your packets, you can see the first denial letter and I hope that also, there was a second denial letter that came through a revised one from the building commissioner. He was working off of, I think, the older zoning board and we had these new sign requirements voted in. So there's a new letter and I kind of went back and forth to look at both of them. Essentially, it's similar, variances required, but just changing of the different notes. So there are five that he's listed and I thought it might be easy to kind of, you know, if there's any questions about what we're trying to do here, we're trying to take a static board, which is, is not digitized and we're looking for variance to make it digitized. One side is already that, and there was a variance granted in 2005 for that, so we are looking for the other side. So I'll give you a second and take a look at, do you have the revised?
This is what I'm looking for, the commissioner's.
If not, I have one.
I don't even know why we don't have that bylaw changed. The whole world is digital signs nowadays. We still have that, even if you put that little open sign, you're supposed to get a permit for it in Wareham. Believe it or not, there's a neon sign. You're supposed to get a permit.
I found it.
Is it dated November 16th?
No, variance.
I got the 16th.
You're supposed to get a variance for it.
Come to get approved from.
Right, you know, so I don't know why.
So this came in front of us before and they told us they were coming back for this.
Correct. Yeah, they gave us heads up. If it works, they'll come back.
Try it for a year and then try it, you'll like it, you know?
Okay, excellent, so you have the, just updated letter. I just want, if it's the intention that you're looking favorably on this project and you've heard back in 2015, this was the plan, there's actually already, has the hookups there on that side when they installed and you had approved the one side, I believe that it's already there, so it's officially, it's not changing any of the structure or anything furthering towards the road. So the commissioner had noted five different variances and.
Right, why is that?
You know, to be honest with you, I can go through them, but it's really like two that I would say are the ones that, I'm not sure why he's referencing the other ones, but, so you have 1120, which is the permit requirements. It's just referencing that it's an altercation to an existing sign. 1160 prohibited signs, that is talking about the blinking, flashing or fluttering light intensity. So I think that one's applicable, I mean, we're looking for a digitized sign, so I understand that, but it's already pre-existing, non-conforming on the other side with the granted variance, so. And then the other are talking about the equal signage, the, you know, the fact that it's a billboard. What was really interesting to me is that this revised sign, there's only one reference to a billboard within your zoning bylaw and it's just in the definition section. There's nothing specifically talking about billboards or prohibiting them. So I think we sent over some examples, you should have got them today of what, kind of public service announcements, some mass DOT, kind of no texting, no driving, no drinking. So that actually is, if you drive by there, you can see it on the other side, those go up to help public service and that's something that is Clear Channel, it doesn't charge anything, so it's a free service. So we wanted to show that, so that would also be run on the other side as well. So I think we're here to, I can talk about why we think it's applicable, but it sounds like, you know, this was something that was contemplated and we're ready to move forward to make it uniform on the other side of this board.
Okay, well, the 1120 section, because the restoration or the work you're doing, that's why you need a variance, it's 35% more than the cost of the sign, so that's why he believes it has, then you have to confirm, which you can't. So that's, that's his first section.
It talks about a deteriorating board though, so I hear you.
All right, I'll start by, Troy, while I read a couple of things. Troy, what do you think?
I don't really have any issue with it.
Okay, you have no problem with this? I just want you to keep in mind, I recall, Jimmy recalls, he was with me here, and the first sign when the administrator come, came here and supported it, because it makes the town 20, almost 20 grand a year in taxes, because they get a cut from the advertising. And also, we had done some conditions back then, I recall, maybe you could pull it out and look at it, that the town will get a free, I don't know, free.
Public announcements.
Yeah, like 20 minutes a day or 10 minutes, like congratulation, high school, class of 22, welcome back for the hero or something like this. So we read the other, the previous decision, if you guys interested in that, so. Where were we? We started Veronica.
Troy, Veronica.
Veronica.
I'm just, I'm trying to get familiar with it. I saw the email that came over with the billboard things and the email, I looked at those, so I'm just trying to understand, where, is this supposed to be going, where on this? Oh, over there. Oh, yeah, billboard.
When you go from here, you see the car wash, if you go from here, you see it, it's already digital. If you come in from Buzzards Bay, it's just like paper, like the old days.
Oh.
So they want to do the other side digital.
Digital on the other side, okay. No, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I'd like to hear what the other members of the board have to say.
All right, Jimmy.
My recollection is when they came in front of us before, the town was reluctant to agree to both sides and the applicant was reluctant to spend the money on both sides because they didn't know if they were going to be able to raise enough revenue to justify and they wanted, and this was kind of like a, let's try it and if it works, we'll come back and ask for the other side. I don't think it's caused any accidents. I don't know how much money it's made for the people that run the sign, but I think it's just like, and this should be just like, okay, thanks for coming in, you're approved, get out. Let's, you know, that's the way I see this, you know? What's the big deal? I think, you know, it's great, we put on a show for the town that we care, but it's a billboard, it's up there. Instead of once a month, a guy goes up there with wallpaper paste and puts some smiley guy that wants to do injury protection, he can be there for 30 seconds and then somebody that does another kind of law can be there for 30 seconds and then somebody that sells soap can be there for 30 seconds. Who cares?
And we granted Robertson once, I remember. Anyway, I look at this bylaws quick, he's right, the commissioner, because 1120, section 1128, it will trickle over the rest. So he's, those variances are legit. The requests are legit. Richard? I mean, sorry, either way, Richard? Jake?
So I guess I'm pretty much for it because I don't know why eastbound gets the good side and the westbound doesn't. So if the eastbound gets a good side, I'm for the westbound getting a good side.
Jake?
I'm okay with it.
All right, anyone on the public want to speak against or for the sign? Anyone on the audience, on Zoom, want to speak against or in favor? No one's in here for the record.
I have a question if nobody's.
Go ahead, doesn't seem nobody.
I don't remember what the billboard sign is. Does the sign change or flash or is it just solid and then it changes? Like, because like a billboard is, you have, like Jim said, you have a picture of something and then it stays like that and then somebody comes and change it. Is this something that's going to be changing digitally while you're driving?
You know, I know what you're saying, during Wallace Dale, it says a flashing that distracts drivers, no. We did discuss that a lot of time. It comes out, stays 30 seconds, but during that 30 seconds, there's no flashing, oh, stop by today, it just.
It's a static sign.
Sign, and every 30 seconds, it changes smoothly so it doesn't distract.
It changes every 30 seconds?
It would be like the ones on 24 that we see now.
Yeah, Robbins.
It'd be like the other, it'd be like the other side of this sign.
Right.
I've almost crashed so many times looking at the billboards going into Boston and all of a sudden, you know, slamming on the brakes, but hey, they're everywhere.
And I don't believe it's going to make any more brightness to anybody more than that car wash sign. I don't know if anybody's gone by, but that is a bright flashing sign, so I'm fully, fully for these people to be able to give the westbound people their glory.
Plus, you have the median line now, so that would, that.
They put Amber Alert's up there and stuff like that too.
That helps a lot with traffic accidents and stuff, so.
Is that going up that far or didn't it?
Yeah, all the way to Red Brook, to head it away.
So how do we approach these variances? How do we approach the variance?
You just grant them, you have the power still.
If I may, through the chair, under section 1130, administration and penalties, that actually kind of has a subsection that talks about your rights as a board, people to vote. And number two, says zoning board of appeals may vary the provisions of this bylaw in specific cases, and that's one, two and three. So I think that's what, you know, the variance would be based upon, that the variance is necessary to comply with other applicable laws. The zoning board determines that circumstances involved with a particular sign were not contemplated by the bylaw. I mean, this is one of the, I don't know how many billboards are in town, but not a lot, less than, I don't know, five. And that it wouldn't essentially be substantially degrading from the intent and the purpose of the bylaw. So I think you could cover it on that to vary those articles.
All right, I would greatly appreciate counsel if the board go for it tonight. If you could pull the old. If you could pull the old approval and draft similar, pretty much the same, I like, and it worked a lot, a lot of time the town uses it. I mean, administrator or the border, anybody says, hey, listen, put this for the class graduation, something, and they do. I've seen it. And they do it for free, which is good. So if we could draft the same decision, if we say yes tonight, and me or Jim would go sign it, we, he'll email it for everyone, we'll read it, and if anybody has an issue, call us, or call Sonia, say, make sure me and Jim don't sign until, until it's rectified. That, that good?
It's good.
All right. That being said, anything you wanna add, counsel, before we close?
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
Okay, I have a motion by Jim to close, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain. Okay. So now we need a vote on all the variance reliefs. So we're gonna need a motion on relief on 1120, section 1128, 1160, section 1163, 1160, section 1164, 1167, and 11, article 1172, section 1172, 1, 2, and 3. So we need a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the variance.
I second.
Second by Jim, I mean by Rich, all in favor, say aye.[1669.76]